President United States, the governor of Florida went to five. Why should we stop short?
So, I'm not thinking, where I am is that I'm not necessarily in place, in line with us going to five without seeing what that looks like. So if we want to consider that, what I would recommend is that we ask staff to come back in June with what 5% will look like versus 3%. And then we have the conversation then. We can also see what we have to do millage rate wise or in, you know, looking at some of our expenses that we may be able to cut in order to get to that 5%. But I also want us to understand that we also, what the state and federal government may not be contemplating is that FRS bill that may put us even further under, in a place where we may have to rethink this whole budget increases and everything that we're looking at. So what I would-
I accept it as a friendly amendment, what you just said. I accept it.
So what I would recommend is that, is that we ask staff to come back in our next budget workshop with what 5% looks like versus 3% for our contemplation in the next budget workshop.
I have a point of information-
Yes, sir.
-question. Do we, does staff need any direction from us to offer all of these options in June that we can pick from? Or are we able to rely on staff to bring back every idea under the sun and we have a robust discussion?
I'll tell you what, Commissioner O'Keefe, what I believe, and you guys tell me how you feel about it, is that if we have our eyes set on specific numbers, that we give staff that direction because it does take staff time to go through these things and look at every single scenario. And what I don't want, when they came back today, what they came back with average from 0 to 5 was what, which is what we've done in the past with 3% being the standard, right? And so we come here, we ask for 5, right? So let's say they come back and they come back with 5 and it was, okay, well, no, we don't want to do 5 with this 4.0. So I think, I think if we're going to target 5, I think we ask staff to come back with a 3% average and a 5% average. And we look at it and we make some decisions based on that. If we come back with 5%, at least we know what the maximum, maximum of what we're looking at is, rather than have staff kind of just try to read our minds as to what we may want. Does that make sense?
That does, yeah.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Welsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure that we clarify for anybody that's listening because this is getting a little wonky. It would be 5% across the board, not 3% average. So it would be, now, this is a good question. If, if we, number one, let me just put this out. All of this is hypothetical in the, in the arena that we may have a massive hole in our budget because of FRS. So really, any conversation like this, although not entirely premature, is pretty premature because we may, this may all go out the window when you start talking about $14 million across the board. So, to that general revenue increase of 13 million, so you've got a real problem if that happens. So, just to clarify for people out there in the world who are like, why are we talking about raising salaries when we have the potential of a $14 million budget hole? This is contemplating a huge hypothetical. Now, that being said, if you guys are already contemplating an average 3% in a merit raise, if you go to a 5% across the board, does then that, does your, your cost is not going to just go up 2%? It's going to go up substantially more than that because you're talking about across the board versus an average of 3%. I guess the 3% average would be fair, but it would still be 2%?
It would be.
So it'd still be another $1.5 million then under that scenario?
It's about 1.2.
In addition?
Yes.
Gotcha. So, 1.2 in addition to what is already in the budget for 3% average raises. I say all that just to make sure that anybody listening in the public, on the TV or whatever, understands what we're talking about clearly, but also that with the caveat that we have a potential poison pill coming from the legislature in terms of a $14 million budget shortfall that would, in my opinion, and I'm okay with staff coming back with, with recommendations, but if you have a $14 million budget hole, that negates any possibility of a 5% across the board. In my mind, I'm willing to look at the numbers that you provide, but I mean, that's a huge caveat. I think we're kind of glazing over a little bit, but that's a big deal. And when you start talking about millage rate increases, and I know the Commissioner Proctor is saying, you know, in lieu of, and I'm saying doing both at the same time, but that is a pretty big, you know, elephant in the room, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welsh. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner, immediate pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked a lot about across the board increases to 5% and I think there's some value in that. And we're not here to make a decision today on where that's going to go, but I wanted to offer another perspective, an additional perspective. I think we could support the ETB if at some point we look at the scenario and the FRS resolution is resolved in a way that doesn't, doesn't give us the hole that we're looking at, yeah. So I could see the value in doing it across the board, but I spent a lot of time in the private sector before I started sitting in this chair and there's a lot of, there's a lot of merit in the merit increases, tremendous amount of merit in the increases to reward employees that are doing an excellent job in the departments, really means a lot. And in a tight labor market that we're in right now, it helps retain those employees that are doing a tremendous job. And so, when we meet in June, once we know a lot of these unknowns are no longer unknown, I'd like to talk with, you know, the county administrator and deputy and other staff about, you know, what their experience is. I mean, have you found ETBs to be effective in retaining the best employees in a market like this? I want to have that discussion because it's important. I could see us raising an average to 5 or having the same amount of funding, but yet doing the merit increases. But in June, I'd like to have that discussion with you all because there's a, certainly there's a value toward doing it across the board, but there's also a tremendous amount of value in giving department managers the ability to reward those that are working very hard, the ones that we desperately want to keep in such a tight labor market. The second point I wanted to make, there's been some talk about millage rate increases as a possibility, consideration and all that. I just wanted to say to anybody that might be listening, let me be very clear, I believe this county commission, certainly majority, maybe probably unanimously, is just opposed to the idea of millage rate increases unless it is absolutely necessary. For 12 years or 11 years, we've kept the millage rate the same. And because of our county staff, we've been able to keep that millage rate the same and provide a tremendous host of services to our county residents. We want that to continue, but we also want to make sure that, you know, a millage rate increase is a serious issue, a serious matter. And I think, I believe all of us will be incredibly opposed to that unless we are faced with a dire situation with the FRS legislation that gives us an incredible hole that we need to fill in Leon County government. So just want to make that very clear to people. You know, we're not, in my mind, I'm not concerning millage rate increase. I don't think many people here at this DAAS are. If the FRS legislation is in the worst case scenario and it creates the $14 million hole that Commissioner Welsh has talked about, we will have a host of options and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go to immediate pass, but just real quick, I just, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Minor, and I agree with you there. I think that, I'm willing to look at the numbers of what 5% looks like, but it's going to take a lot to get me to an increase, given the fact that we are sitting in a budget right now to contemplate an average of 3%, giving those, those in management an opportunity for a 0 to 5% increase. And I don't, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Administrator, as far as, you know, our pay across the board to our employees, I would imagine that light sized counties, we do, we do pretty well. Well, I mean, would you, would you agree?
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. Let me just say though, that while what Commissioner Minor says is right on relative to the benefits, we also acknowledge, we'd be the first to acknowledge, as Commissioner Proctor was articulating, that when the board decided to do that last year with the 5% across the board, we are in pretty extraordinary times. And we'd be the first to acknowledge that relative to the inflationary environment that we're in and that sort of thing. So there's, while it may be something, again, that we, we would like to do and attempt to do in terms of merit in most years, we also acknowledge that the last couple of years and the current year have been sort of an exception in terms of, in terms of cost of living and that sort of thing. So we'd be the first to acknowledge that.
Thank you. And also, I think, Commissioner Welsh, I think you make a good point too in that we are looking at maybe a $14 million mandate coming over from state government, but I think that changed the budget, that changed the budget as a whole. I think, I mean, that changed the idea of raises and everything else that we're contemplating. We might even have to go back over to the sheriff and talk to him about, you know, how we may have to do things with him because it's just, it just blows our budget apart. But I've heard from all of you that our employees are important to what we do here in Leon County. We could not do what we do without them. And so, to contemplate doing nothing, I think is unreasonable, given the times that we're in. But Administrator just brought up a great point in that we did do 5% across the board last year, which I did not, I did not remember. We did do 5% across the board this year. We're looking at another average 3%, which makes 8% over a couple of years. And if we can get to 5, we can get to 5. I think we look at what it looks like, but, but let no one that's listening to this think that we have not done what we could do to make our employees, put our employees in a position to be able to deal with the inflationary environment that we have been in. And so, again, I'm okay with looking at the numbers and seeing what it looks like, the average from 3%, given the times that we're in and the things that we're contemplating coming at us, I don't think it's a bad idea. I, it's going, like, it's going to be a hard place for me to be in to look at raising the millage, knowing that we're going to have to raise the MSTU, as well as looking at the fire services fee that's coming. We have been a board that has kept things down, as Commissioner Proctor says, for the past 12 years. And I think really the only time we've ever contemplated an increase is when we were in the deep, deep throes of recession, back when we first started this thing. And so, we don't have to change who we are in order to do what we do. I think that, that staying steady with who we are, making sure that we do the best we can to make our employees whole, not to mention, we're looking at right here, going with our primary healthcare provider, patient visit reimbursement from 125 to 175 this year and 225 next year. No one can say we're not an organization that does not take care of our employees. I like what Commissioner Proctor is going in that if we can do more, we should contemplate doing more. So let's look, look at what that looks like. But if we end up being at that 3%, that average of 3%, I could, I could look myself in the mirror and say that we've done something good for our employees in this inflationary time. We're going to end up, last comment with Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry, I'm going to go, Commissioner Proctor, O'Keefe, get the last word and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vince, your April 5th letter to our legislative delegation, I love how you landed the plane in asking for a waiver of those counties that don't experience a 10% increase. And I think this year ours is 7.5. So if they set in the FRS legislation, a waiver for counties that just don't grow that quickly, that would be good. Secondly, in your closing, I saw that you capably outlined that the state could also take the option of offsetting what counties might owe from the $13 billion surplus, of which 7.5 billion is unallocated in the general revenue reserve. This is horrendous. There's 7.5 billion unallocated dollars and we sitting across the street and that many fish are over there in the ocean and we can't catch a minnow. Vince, thank you for this letter. And I think, I would recommend and I hope that this commission would too, that you, May 5th is the closing date for our session. Reiterate, I don't think this has gone to conference, we need to jump in like gorillas going wild in the jungle on this and take those two points, those two arguments. I'd like, I would love to see you, because we're coming down the home stretch, and I would love to see you kick another letter out. It needs to occur. I was pondering what legal challenges Madam Attorney does that first blackened section 3rd paragraph from Vince's letter. Has anybody in there decided to circle wagons and call out the, I almost want to say constitutionality of this unfunded mandate?
No, Commissioner Proctor, not to my knowledge. I think the argument against an unfunded mandate issue or complaint would be that it's across the board and the county is voluntarily an FRS employer. Just like the city, the county has the option to not be an FRS employer. It can go with a different retirement plan if it wants to. So I think, could the argument be made? I don't know how much merit it would have.
It can't change plans right now. I mean, it can change out to 2026 maybe, but the county should, she didn't have to say that, did she? She asked, I will ask you no more questions. All right. Then finally, Mr. Chairman, speaking of every tub sitting on its own bottom, so to speak, and we talked about the tipping fee of transporting our garbage and whatnot. But Vince, I wanted to ask, first I want to say to the chairman's point, that I'm arguing for the fundamental, I'm talking about our common worker on that 5%. I don't think that we preempt and take away the executive level employee or for the managers that Commissioner Minor was talking about. It does not take away what the county administrator perceives in that role of merit and bonus. I'm not trying to take that. I understand that in every, you know, organization, that that category of employee recognized as senior level, the compensation thing is different. I'm talking about 5% across the board for folk who don't, who are not in that discretionary norm, if you will, which the county administrator would have the ability to reward, okay? You got that, Vince? You hear what I'm saying? I'm talking about 5% for folk who are not executive level. Executive level, that's still the administrator's discretion, as far as I'm concerned. But what I am concerned about is the tipping fee. And I feel like for every, all these bodies, when the city left the county alone and pulled out on us and we were just left with the EMS, is that right, Vince? They dropped the ball. The city dropped the ball, the hospitals had the ball. The hospital had it and said, we are not going to do ambulance services any longer. But how come we don't get a tipping fee for every body, B O D Y, that we take to one of them hospital doors at a community or TMH? We should get $500 tipping fee for bringing a body up there. Everybody and every body that comes in there is worth thousands of dollars of revenue and we don't get a dollar for what we pay for to take people there. We need to look at for every head that we put in a bed in that hospital, that there's huge money being made. We're talking about money. And the role that we play and what we need to average out is how much money is we taking to them hospital doors that they are billing Medicaid, Medicare, somebody's insurance, they're getting paid. And in this game, we shouldn't be duped and providing the gas, paying for EMS director and all those people riding around. We paying for something of which somebody else is getting 100% of the value. And I'd like to see a new approach with our hospital folk, that they are not fair. It ain't fair for us to pay the total F A R E. We paid a total F A R E and insurance and all of that, but they get 100% of everything we bring to them. I want some of that money back and I'm asking you all to please look at that and propose it and drive the train and get something. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, I just want, well, first I just want to mention, I do believe we have the estimated cost of a flat 5% is 1.2 million in the document. And I want to say that Chairman Maddox makes a very good point, as far as we really are discussing if nothing happens with the FRS. If anything happens with the FRS, you just throw all this paper in the air and we start fresh in June. So, sticking to what we know, assuming there's not a change in FRS, I also think Commissioner Minor makes a very good point and it convinced me that I'm looking forward to whatever happens come June, a good organization, the purpose of pay and benefits is to retain, recruit and value the best employees. And so I look forward to hearing from the administrator what will be the most effective in doing that because what we do should be effective in valuing and retaining employees. We are going to make a lot of difficult decisions and I think that a lot of people have hit a very good point that, well, anytime we mention the word millage rate, this might be the most followed up budget meeting we've had in, well, I guess 12 years, when we start talking about that. And we are going to, and I can say to anyone listening, the fact that we haven't increased the general millage rate in 12 years and the fact that there are a number of services that we have subsidized by not adjusting appropriately, some of those what I'll call pass through services, shows that we do not do this lightly. And that I think it will be important for us to consider all of the increase to our residents that they're paying next year out of our control. Property insurance is likely to be higher for them, out of their mortgage, out of their escrow payment for people that have mortgages. Waste pro fees will go up, as we discussed, necessarily, fire service fees, EMS fees and possibly city millage increases. So we'll take those into account, but I also want to say that we shouldn't let those increases keep us from stepping up to the plate to make sure we're providing the community goods and services and public good we need to do, but we will do so in a way that reflects the values of our community and this commission. Because I truly believe a budget is a values document and we are going to have to make, consider all options. And I believe it seems a millage rate increase is the last option in a long list of creative options. And I would only support doing so if it's in a way that it matches the values of supporting community needs, balancing the cost of people. And then, staff is already doing this, but I want to emphasize the support, if there are areas, and there are, where we are not recouping enough for the cost of providing enterprise or business type services, we definitely want to bring those up to date before we go charging our average taxpayer more money for those enterprise and business support services in a way that we haven't, we haven't done that. And it, I think that it's scary to add up all these costs that people are perhaps going to be getting, but part of the reason is we're not raising costs and rates to people every year, year after year after year. And so, I'm confident that one time increase, because people don't need to fear your permanent increases from this body. And finally, I'll just put a plug in for, when we come to tight budgets, it's easy for organizations to cut capital investment as the first thing they do. And I want to point out that from a financial and investment perspective, business organizations, when you analyze them, you look at your capital investment as how they are going to grow in the future and how they're going to improve and new things they're going to bring to the market. That applies to a county government as well. And so I'd encourage us to remember that we cannot be shortsighted in our capital investments and infrastructure that we are going to need to support our community in the future, or else we will end up like many other governments that think short sightedly and have bridges that are falling apart and community centers that can't keep up and things like that because money might be tight now, but we have to think long term. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Real quick, I just noticed, well, actually I did, I've written it already, but you've already, but it says all county and constitutional employees, the 5% across the board. That's the number you will come back with, 1.1 million?
Correct.
Okay. So when we say 5% here, it's not just for our employees at the BOCC level, it's for all, it's for the sheriff and everybody else's employees as well?
That's correct.
Can we, but those constitutionals run their own shops, can they, I mean, they have the discretion to do what they want to do, correct?
You approve their budgets for the most part. And so, again, we, for a very long time, it's been our common practice not to differentiate between the employees. That creates other issues.
Right.
But again, on all this, again, commissioners, we're very happy to bring all this back to you in June.
This is more of a nuanced question, but, so let's say we do, we do do that and we send that, those monies over to the constitutionals. At that point, they can decide whether they want to go 5%, 3% or whatever with their own employees, correct?
That's, that's never, that's not happened in the past. Again, they've generally followed our lead on that.
Okay, I just, okay, got it, got it, got it. So really, we already have a number in front of us. It's going to be an extra 1.1 million, which would take that piece up another million, 1.1 in the, in our budget. So I'm going to go to the vice chair and then we're going to go to a vote on this and then we'll take a 10 minute break. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I believe we are, commissioners, I really believe we are all on the same page with this. I think we recognize the contingency depending on what the legislature does. I believe we all appreciate the work of our county employees from the top to the bottom. I believe we all want to give raises across the board with no restriction on merit increases depending on the administration. I think we, we are all right there. I feel that administrator and staff, once we know what the legislature is going to do, they will bring back some options for us to clearly, clearly consider. I don't believe anybody on this DAAS is gung ho about raising the millage rate. And I believe if it comes to that, it would clearly be based on documentation, necessity, making sure, as Commissioner Caban said, that we're providing the best services, the necessary services for the citizens of Leon County. But I also just want to echo Commissioner Proctor's recommendation, and I'm not sure if it's either plausible or feasible, but I think he raised a good point about tipping fees perhaps to our hospitals where EMS takes warm bodies for medical treatment. And I'm not sure, Mr. County Administrator, if this has been raised before, if it has been looked at before, it has been shot down before, but I'm just curious if that has ever been part of negotiations or concern with, with the hospitals.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I can provide more information on this, but I believe it's not legally permissible for us to do that.
Okay. But you will bring it back. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we'll go to a vote. Motion on the floor, options 1, 2, 3, with staff bringing back a budget contemplating 5% across the board increases for our, for all, all county and constitutional employees. All those are fairly capable of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a 10 minute break and come back in here at, we're a little more than 10. Let's say we're back in at 10:40. Let's say we're back in at 10:40.
All right, Mr. Administrator.
Next item, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this budget discussion item seeks board approval to implement an updated fire rescue assessments in the unincorporated area of Leon County effective October 1st, 2023 to provide adequate funding for fire rescue services in the unincorporated area. Commissioners, I'm going to share a brief overview of the item, followed by an also very brief presentation from the consulting firm that prepared the proposed fire rescue rates. Commissioners, since 1988, the county has been providing fire protection services in the unincorporated area by contracting with the city of Tallahassee. Consistent with Florida statutes and the Leon County Code of Laws, fire rescue services are funded through a fire rescue assessment charged to property owners. The funding of fire services through a dedicated assessment is a common approach used by numerous cities and counties throughout Florida. The funding method directly ties the cost of the service to the property benefiting from the service. The fire rescue assessment collected in the unincorporated area, except for a very small portion that goes to VFDs, is remitted to the city of Tallahassee. As previously planned and consistent with our interlocal agreement, the county and the city engaged a consultant who you'll hear from shortly to prepare, to prepare an updated fire rescue rate study. The last fire rescue assessment rate study was completed in 2015.
All right, Mr. Administrator.
rescue rate study. The last fire rescue assessment rate study was completed in 2015, Commissioners, and the rates in the unincorporated area have not changed since 2018. As a result of the increasing of increasing costs at TFD, the current rates are insufficient to pay for the actual cost of providing fire rescue services in the unincorporated area. As will be presented by the consultant, the results of the fire rescue services assessment recommend increasing fees for FY '24, and the rates remain in effect for five years. As planned, these new assessments would fully fund the county's share of the fire department budget. With that brief overview, Commissioners, I'd like to ask Sandy Newbarth, the Assistant Director for GSG, Governmental Services Group, to present the study. Sandy?
Good morning, Sandy Newbarth with Government Services Group. Like Vince said, I'm here to give you an overview of our study. Government Services Group has been in business for over 27 years. We have, we are the leader in the state for development and implementation of assessment programs to fund essential services and infrastructure needs. We've worked with over 150 cities, counties, and special districts throughout the state of Florida, and in on over 150 fire assessment programs. I've worked with GSG for 18 years. I have been designated as an expert by the courts in development and implementation of special assessments. That's a little bit about me. I think your staff did a great job in their agenda item summary. It gave a lot of details and everything, so I'm just going to kind of go over a high-level overview. So, what is a fire assessment? A fire assessment is simple, a charge imposed against properties to pay for fire services. It does not include the EMS component of the of the fire services. It only includes the fire protection up to the level of first responder. So, it doesn't necessarily mean flames, but it means up to the level of first responder. The fire assessment is a home rule revenue source, so it's case law-driven, not statutory-driven. There are two prongs that must be met to keep you legally defensible. The first prong says it has to have a special benefit to property. The courts have said that fire protection services up to the level of first responder do have a benefit to property. The second prong is the fair and reasonable prong. That's where we come in. We come in and look at what's a fair and reasonable way to allocate the cost of the fire protection services. So, the methodology that we have developed for you, that you've had in place since the 2009 study, is the historical demand methodology. This is court-tested and approved, last looked at in the Desertario versus Boynton Beach case, in which the courts blessed the methodology, and we did do the Boynton Beach Fire Assessment Study. That was challenged, and the courts upheld the methodology, the way we divided the budget, all of that. So, it's tried and shrewd. It's most widely adopted throughout the state of Florida. About 90% to 95% of the fire assessments in the state do use the historical demand methodology. Easy for property owners to understand, and the key to this methodology is the historical demand. Who is demanding the fire services from the county and the city? So, the methodology, there's pretty much four prongs that we look at to develop the methodology. We look at your service delivery. We first of all want to know who benefits from the fire protection services. It's the entire county. The city provides the fire services through a contract, and they reach the entire county, and you have the volunteers that help too. Then we look at what type of services are being provided. You have ALS without transport, and so that means, and that's the fire, your county EMS provides the transport and the predominant EMS component of the fire services in the county. Right now, again, we are looking at fire protection only, so we're not including your EMS that you provide. So, that tells us, though, the budget that we're looking at and the calls that we're looking at do have some EMS in them. So, we have to make sure we remove the EMS, because to keep you legally defensible, we're just looking at fire protection. And what we've done is, we realized there might be a different level of service, whether you're in the core area where you have, where you're within two paid stations or in the outer side, out area. So, we've created Zone 1 and Zone 2, and we've done our analysis that way. The second component is, we look at the budget. We create a five-year average budget, helps to smooth out the rates, so you're not going up and down, and then you can you can develop the five-year assessable budget rates. The five-year average fire protection budget is $51,423,000. So, all of these, the scenario that I'm going to be providing you is based on that $51.4 million budget. Then, and again, the methodology that we use to divide the EMS from the fire protection is the same methodology we used in the Desertario case that was blessed by the court. So, then we look at call data. We looked at three years of call data. Again, pull out the EMS. This is not about EMS, this is about fire protection. So, then we do an analysis of the fire protection calls for that three-year period, and this is the key to keeping you legally defensible. The budget splits that we make are based on this historical call data. Then we look at the parcel data. We look at what units are you providing fire protection services to. After we get those four components, then we start calculating rates. We calculate the non-government rates, and then we calculate the government fee calculation. So, the first budget split, the first key to the historical demand methodology, is we look at government versus non-government. So, these are the fire protection calls, and we say, who is demanding what services? So, 11.72% of those three years of fire protection calls went to government, and 88.28% went to non-government. So, therefore, that $51.4 million budget gets split into these pieces. Government pays $6.026 million, non-government pays $45.4 million. So, that's your first key split. The next one is, we say, okay, let's take that $45.4 million, and how are we going to split it between Zone 1 and Zone 2? And as the agenda summary item told you, predominant amount in the unincorporated area is in Zone 2. So, Zone 1 demands more service than Zone 2, which makes sense, they have more units. So, they're demanding 71.95% of the services, so they're going to pay $32.66 million of that budget. Zone 2 is demanding 28.5% of these services, so they're going to pay $12.73 million of the budget. The third and final split that we do is, we take your non-government calls for Zone 1 and Zone 2, and we divide them by their demand at the rate category levels. So, Zone 1, commercial is 40.01%, so they would pay $13 million. They would fund $13 million. Industrial warehouse, very small, 1.67%, so they're going to fund $546,000. Residential is the bulk of the calls, 58.32%, so they're going to be funding $19 million. That's of the Zone 1's part. Zone 2, which is predominantly where the unincorporated parcels are, again, it's a little bit different. You have a lot more residential in Zone 2, so compared to the non-residential. So, 83.33% of that Zone 2 budget, that $12 million budget, gets funded by residential. 1.39% gets funded by industrial warehouse, and 15.28% gets funded by commercial. So, after we get all of these components, and we know how many units are in each category, then we develop the rates. It's a math problem. So, then we take the residential rate category percent of the budget, divided by the residential dwelling units, to get the per-unit rate. For non-residential, we take that proportion of the budget for that non-residential rate category, divided by the square foot associated with that rate category, to get a per-square-foot rate. But we've developed tiers for yours, similar as you've always done. So, we have tiers, and then so then we calculate each tier's rate based on that per-square-foot rate, to get that per-tier rate. So, Zone 1, funding $32.66 million. Your residential rate is $45.39. These are annual rates. So, and then, most of the time, we look at about a 5,000 to 9,000 square foot non-residential. Commercial would be $1,920, and industrial warehouse, remember, they have a little percentage, they're $311. Now, for the Zone 2, funding $12.7 million, your residential rate is $223 per dwelling unit, per year, and at that 5,000 level for a building, your commercial is $1,779 per year, and your industrial warehouse is $568 per year. Then we calculate the government fee. So, we take that $6 million of the government's share of that $51 million budget, divided by the number of government square footage, to calculate the per-square-foot rate, and we came up with $0.26 per square foot. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Minor?
Mr. Chairman, she was basically talking fast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't hear that fast, but I was trying to, trying to follow, follow. So, so you're suggesting to me that Crawfville Road, which did not have one of those dots that showed where firehouses were disstruded, and in Woodville, we have, there was a dot, and I imagine that's the unit down on Oak Ridge Road and Woodville Highway. But how is this so fair, when there's no kind of fire hydrant down Crawfville Road? How can you charge people the same amount of money?
You're not. Zone 2 is getting charged less than Zone 1.
But for those, those people who have, who are not within five miles of a fire hydrant, I mean, you're still overcharging them.
They still respond to those calls. They still respond to those calls, and as a matter of fact, it probably costs more to respond to those calls, because then they have to send out a tanker truck with water. Where there's a fire hydrant, they send out an engine and hook it up to the fire hydrant. Where there's no water source, then they send the tanker truck with the water source. So, it...
Again, the poor people...
They're still getting the fire services.
The people still are getting the higher cost if they access, because they got to get the whole tanker. They may not need none, but to put a frying pan out, they got to pay for the tanker.
Well, they're paying the same as everyone else.
Because of where they live. So, there's a geographical imbalance. The service ain't the same, and I have been asking for, and this doesn't go to you, because you're obviously a mathematician and stuff like that, but it ain't fair that I got people investing in our county, in areas of, for me and Commissioner Caban, and they don't have the same security, and they probably not getting the same insurance rate, because they don't have the same fire hyd- hydrant, what's that word? What's that thing that the dog went on?
Our hydrant.
Hydrant, thank you. They don't have that. So, we need that. And, Mr. Administrator, I've been saying it for 1,000 years. And when you go down in Walcollo County, I want y'all to look at the number of fire hydrants, all down 319, going into Panacea in the middle of nowhere. What, and maybe the national forests require, maybe because that's where the national forests is, you gotta put them things ever so regular. But we ain't got none. And I want to just say to this commission, as we set, set some kind of fee here, I want you to know, I don't feel good about it. I don't think that it's the same. I don't think that the city is giving enough consideration to the people down on Glover Road, Oak Ridge Road, all down in there, everything south of 363 cutoff. It's not the same. And I don't know, I saw three dots on your screen. Can y'all go back to the dots, with the screen with the dots on the, a different geographic area? Vince, we gonna get out of here before 2:50 for real? Yep. So, see, we are dotless on Crawfville Road, and that other dot down at the south end of the county, I believe, isn't that a volunteer thing, Caban? Is that a volunteer station?
I actually was gonna wait till you were done and ask a question, similar to the volunteer fire department. I don't want to interrupt you, though.
Okay, I was just trying to...
These are just city stations that are depicted.
Those are city stations in the county?
Are they both? You got volunteer on here, too?
We don't have a city station down in Woodville. And I don't know if the volunteer station and the other thing is them dots is misleading. Them dots is misleading.
I think some of those dots are the volunteer fire station.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that a trained city hire rescue fire person is a different standard from some volunteers who say, well, we'll show up tonight, y'all come tomorrow, all like that. It ain't the same.
The city responds to all the calls. The volunteers help supplement it, but there is a city response to every call.
You showing me a dot. I want to, I want to be, I want to get through this without my blood pressure going up. I don't have the same access with volunteers down in Woodville as what you got up there on Vanhaman Road. Them people's trained, they educated, they got skills, they know all about fire and all that stuff. Ain't no volunteers in Woodville the same. Don't tell us that. It's not the same. So, whatever it is that we look at is misleading, because the quality goes in before the name goes on, but the quality's not the same before the name goes on here. So, I like to see equity. I like to see equity in the fire thing. People clowning and complaining to me about Proctor, when y'all gonna, why can't we get a fire hydrant? That'd help their, their monthly insurance go down. A fire hydrant. Maybe we need to put a dummy fire hydrant down. It isn't Maylac, it can do something. Put up a dud, you know, imitation. If that'd helped, the insurance something go down. But everything we're talking about this morning is budget. Last time I checked, and I'll defer you, Commissioner O'Keefe, about money and budgeting and all like that. No expert, but everything we talking about is money, and how to save everybody some money, save our institutions some money, some money. Here's, I like, we need more dots. Look over there. That's all right, I ain't gonna make no comparison, you can see it. But we ain't got the same. We paying money that we ain't got the same. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Caban?
And follow up to Commissioner Proctor. I did a ride-along with the volunteer fire department a couple months back, and one of the requests that they had in substitution for fire hydrants is fill-up stations. So, in the rural communities, they have locations. I think there's one at Fort Braden School, K-88 School. So, in this, in this report, do we, do we know if we have an adequate amount of fill-stations in our rural communities? And would that be a adequate substitution for a fire station, I mean, for a fire hydrant?
So, our analysis was to give you a legally defensible fire assessment. It wasn't to do an analysis of the services that the city is providing.
Okay, so would that be a better question for staff in a different time?
For the fire department, yeah.
Sure, it would be, and we could answer a lot of that. We are, for the most part, community-rated in terms of fire, which means, and we're all familiar with ISO and how that works. The fact of the matter is that, that not all insurance companies even recognize ISO. They look at your community rating, and they say, across the board, there's very strong fire services in, throughout Leon County. And they look at, as far as insurance is concerned. In terms of all of these things like fill-stations and the things, those are all things that you have the ability to do, but they're generally not recognized by ISO and that sort of thing. ISO looks at your proximity to a fire station and your proximity to fire flow infrastructure. Outside of that, you can sort of, you know, make little improvements at the margins, and we're constantly evaluating options to do just that. Whether there's adequate fill-stations... Whether there's adequate fill-stations, that sort of thing, I'd have to defer to Chief Abrams on that. And I could, he's available if we...
I think, I don't want to speak on your behalf, Commissioner Proctor, but I think what you're getting at, which I would agree, is that with the rate resolution, we want to make sure that our rural communities are represented equally with this.
And I'm being told that the ISO rating is a three, which is really good. A one is the best, three is really good.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Minor and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the, for the study, appreciate it, the analysis. Just to make sure that we're on the same page, so zone one and zone two don't correspond to the city limits. It's basically just, it's just on the accessibility of the core stations and the proximity of residents and commercial properties to those stations.
Correct.
So, the analysis that you've done is without respect to whether someone is in the incorporated or unincorporated area?
The service that they're getting.
Yeah, great, great. How do, and that makes perfect sense. How do you, how do you decide between the ratio of residential to commercial to industrial?
We look at the calls.
Pardon?
We look at the calls and the call breakdown. So, so we have those three different ways that we look at the calls. And so, that's why zone one is a little bit different than zone two, because the, you've got more non-residential demand, because you've got more non-residential units there. So, obviously, there's more to demand. But when you've got more units to divide into that portion of the budget, it brings that rate down.
Okay.
And then, and then in zone two, the residential was eighty-some percent. So, but yet, it still was less than the zone one residential at fifty-eight percent, because they're funding less.
That makes sense. So, it's based purely on calls, not by square footage? Okay, perfect.
Purely on calls.
Now, when it comes to square footage, though, that's when you tier based on square footage amounts. How do you come up with those ratios?
So, so there, there, the tier values, what we do is we, so that you don't have to be completely accurate, and then you have people calling the property appraiser, saying, I didn't have a fifteen oh-three square feet, I have a fourteen ninety-six square feet. So, we create these tiers, and we assign it to the lowest square footage in that tier. And then, that's how we capture those units. So, in the five thousand to nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot tier, all those buildings would be captured at five thousand square feet. And then, we add all that square footage up to see how much square footage we have in the commercial. And then, we do the math problem with that. Then, we take that per-square-foot rate and apply it to the five thousand square feet. So, everyone in that tier gets charged equally.
And just to make sure I hear you right, so you actually, you take the unit cost per square foot, right? And then, you group them up into different tiers and assign that unit cost per square foot to each category, to each tier, right?
Correct, correct.
Pretty smart, actually. Okay?
It's not our first rodeo.
Sorry, I mean, it's just, it's, it's really, it's very systematic how you've gone through this, is what I'm trying to say.
And this is what keeps you legally defensible, so...
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Listen, I thank you for the analysis, I appreciate it. And also want to thank the county administrator and staff for, for all their work over the past several years on, on, on trying to do everything that they can to keep rates low for residents.
Twenty eighteen, and then we had the rates cover the cost.
Right, so for the listening public, we have put this off for as many years as this requirement. And if I'm not mistaken, is, the majority of the counties in zone two, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, zone two's rates are a little bit lower. But all, all told, this is a approximately three dollar per month increase in the fire services fee in the world, like everything has gone up since 2015. And so, this reflects a very measured and modest increase in a crucial public service that we provide, that is a first responder public service. And I'm gonna probably echo these same sentiments when we get on the next item, when we're talking about our EMS MSTU. So, just wanted to make that clear to anybody that's listening. You know, three dollars a month, yes, it's an increase. And I realize that we're nickel and diamond here with potential, potential doom and gloom on the horizon. However, this is for a crucial public service that we provide, that we contract through the city of Tallahassee for in the unincorporated area. So, I think it's a commendation to the staff for being able to put it off for this long. And I think it's a, and again, this is the result of a third-party arms-length study. This is not just us coming up with these rates. This is working with a legally defensible third-party study that allows us to get to this point. So, I just want to clarify that for the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and then Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, Commissioners, I'm, I wish I felt this good about this agreement paying the city this eleven point six million dollars. We don't charge the city for, and we don't get a payment back from them when you base it on the number of calls that call on the EMS truck. And if we did a demarcation of the EMS calls on who lives in the city limits, unincorporated area, versus those who live and call on, in the unincorporated area, the city would owe us a check. Y'all get that? So, this trading and borrowing of services, i- is not the same. But, but Commissioner Caban, if no one else gets this, I need you to appreciate that the city is not interested in running pipes in the south side. Can't even get sewer pipes down Crawfville Road. Vince tells us that it's some big fancy thingy to get a fire hydrant, and that's another grade. We can't get the fundamental pipe from the city. So, when I say that the service is not the same, there's no equity in the fire, in the sewer pipes, anything with a pipe. We getting lesser than. And to me, we got Lake Muntson down there, that's some water that can put out a fire. Turn that into a fire station or something, pump the water to go down to the area that... Can y'all go back to that area, please? See, Lake Muntson is down there, and you say the water not good for nothing. It could be the water that you pump to go put out the fire. And I don't know if that raises the level that Vince is suggesting that we need. But I am suggesting that all down there under, underneath the ground, Walcolle Springs is flowing all beneath the ground, Oak Ridge Road, Glover Road, all under the forest, caverns and tucked away tunnels, it's water down there. How can the area that got the most water underneath its surface can get a fire hydrant? It's geologically perplexing. It ain't that water ain't there, water's straight down. And that water rich, it's very few places in North Florida got as much, much water underneath it, is what we looking at at the bottom of Leon County. All that is Walcolle, it could have been named Walcolle Springs on top of the ground. I'm not happy about this. And the availability is just the creativity. It's not matching what is available for water that is down there in the ground. And, and, and some great genius in this city and county, it's time to some hydraulic breakthrough, how do we tap into the water down underneath that ground and create these fire hydrant systems all across that area? They got the water. We just don't have the genius and the will to make it fly. That's really what's occurring, Commissioner Caban. And I can't get a sewer pipe from the city. And I can't get one of them other pipes, water. It's just discrimination, that's what it is. And it's based on who these people are perceived not to be. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, y'all let me get away with breaking policy here. So, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna ask for a motion. And then, I'll take the last round of comments, then we move to a vote. Is there a motion placed on the floor? Is there a motion for options one, two, one through three, which is staff recommendation?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move options one, two, and three.
Options one through three has been moved by the vice chair. There's a second, second by Commissioner O'Keefe. All right, if you want to speak, jump in the queue now. I have Commissioner O'Keefe, any other speaker. Say nine, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Caban. You want, my vice chair, you want, you do. And then, the vice chair, then we'll go to a vote. Commissioner O'Keefe.
I don't know who can answer this question, but I just have a question following off of Commissioner Proctor's comments. Have we, say, in the past five or ten years, have we explored any alternatives to provide water for fire suppression in the south side?
I think that was a few years back. I don't know if it was specifically the fireside, but, I'm sorry, the south side. But I know that Commissioner, your predecessor asked for us to look at fire hydrant placement in all the unincorporated areas, is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, and as Chief Abrams heads up, we're continuously adding fire hydrants to, to the system. That's something that happens throughout the year, every year. And, and, and Chief Abrams can tell you a little bit more about the prioritization of that. We've also looked into things like federal appropriations on water tanks and different things like that to help augment the system. Utilizing natural systems becomes a little bit more complicated from an ISO purpose and otherwise. For example, you need to pump, my recollection is like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons per minute. The source could, has to have never dried in the past, all of those sorts. Again, that's just for ISO purposes. But we're continuously evaluating how we augment the system. But, but I know that Chief Abrams could talk a little bit more about your specific question, Commissioner, about the south side and the extension of fire hydrants.
Yeah, Commissioners, we actually brought a, an item, it's been, it's been a few years ago, about putting, there's a policy in place for adding fire hydrants to existing water systems. So, you have areas in unincorporated area, you know, throughout the unincorporated area, where the, when the water systems were put in, the requirements for fire hydrants are not the same as what they are today. So, the county has a program where we place hydrants on water systems that allow for a fire hydrant be placed on it. So, the pipe size, the water flow, all sorts of different engineering requirements go into that. Public Works works with the utilities. We identify locations that those can be added, and we bring those up, you know, all the time, adding as many hydrants as we can every year. But we have to work with each of the utilities. Now, what you typically see is, in, in anywhere that's developed, you know, in recent times, hydrants are placed on those water lines as they're put in. So, they're, they're built to meet those standards with water flow and, and size and all the capability and capacity that you need during the construction of that newer facility.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Who, I'm sorry, I still care.
How many, under this policy, how many new hydrants, rough numbers, have been placed in Commissioner Proctor's district in the past few years?
That's a great question. I can't give you an answer off the top of my head. I see Charles Becter kind of going through his...
Actually, I got, I got a better idea.
His thought process.
I see, I see where this is going. We have not had this conversation in a while, Mr. Administrator. Maybe it might be worth it for us to have an item coming back, looking at where we are in unincorporated areas, far as fire hydrant placement, placement is concerned, maybe agenda item, looking at that, and then us having that conversation then. Because honestly, quite frankly, I don't think us addressing it right here in this item is necessarily going to, going to change where we're sitting today. So, what I'd be looking for, I got a motion for options one, two, and three. I'd be willing to entertain an addition to that motion that we bring back in the agenda item, looking at high, fire hydrant placements, placement in the unincorporated area, and what we're doing as far as that's concerned.
I'll move that with one...
Amendment, friendly amendment.
Um, friendly, I mean, one addition. Include that and any alternative fire suppression methods.
That's, that's fair. That's fair. Will you, will you include that?
Absolutely.
Anything else, Commissioner? All right, so look, I got Commissioner Caban, I got the vice chair, and Commissioner Proctor briefly, and then we're gonna go to a vote. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Chairman. You read my mind, because what I had written down right here, for simplicity, Mr. Administrator, would, would it be for best practice just to request a status report on fire hydrants in the unincorporated areas and including fill-stations in that? Would that be?
Sure, and, and that was my interpretation on, on the motion that was just made.
Perfect. If there's not a second, I'll second that motion.
Sorry, second. My vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo that, you read my mind. I think an agenda item coming back on that specific issue would be great. I just want to thank Ms. Newhart, recognize her expertise, eighteen years in county administrator, and those were, for the information on this particular item. But just, I was just looking at it overall, the, the monthly increase averaged about four dollars. So, we're looking at an annual increase of about, give or take, about fifty dollars per... No, I see Alan shaking his head. No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, on top of page five, you'll see zone two is the majority for the unincorporated area. The annual increase is about thirty-eight dollars, which would be about three dollars a month.
Oh, thirty-eight, not fifty.
Yes, correct, thirty.
So, that, that's even better. And I just, you know, commend the commission and staff for, you know, keeping it low the la- the last five years. And I don't think any of our residents, considering we need that protection, that this is essential services, so I don't think any of our, our, our residents, our taxpayers, would have a big issue with that increase, so that we can clearly maintain those, those essential services. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that attorney too, as well. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Proctor closes out briefly, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just want Commissioner to understand, appreciate, you know, I'm a team player. And I'm not gonna be able to vote for this matter. I have to look people in the eye who have questioned me again and again about fire services. I have nothing new to tell them since the last agreement. And I'm not gonna be able to vote money out of their pocket and increase it when I'm still stammering. And I like to stutter, but I am. And I like to have to look down at the ground, but I, I, I have no answer. Wanted to ask the question, technically, can we co-locate the sewer pipes that we're running down the Woodville area now with water pipes that, you know, we got a hole, it's trenched. Can you trench and co-locate and dig one hole and save a lot of money? And run pipes that has water for the hydrant and the pipes that will carry the sewer? I mean, what prevents us from killing two birds, if you will, with one, one, one hole? Is there a prohibition against that?
Where it's practical, the city does backfill some of their gaps on water systems, but often, they don't have the availability to bring it to the locations. So, if there are small gaps, I know on occasion, they will put some additional water system in. But overall, it's based on availability from the city.
I'd love to see, since we're adding pipes for, for, for immediate pipes, too, for sewer, what hindereth the city from considering to run pipes for water, for hydrants down the Woodville, which we badly need. But for purposes already iterated, I can't support and walk with you all on this.
Understood. Motion on the floor is for options one through three with a agenda item on fire hydrants in the unincorporated area to come back to us at some point over the next year. I was the favorite in the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another very important item. Commissioners, this budget discussion item considers increasing the EMS MSTU to support funding for EMS operations. Commissioners, since 2003, Leon County's been providing countywide EMS services. Since its inception, we've implemented a high-performance system model because of the significant benefits for response time and the associated cost savings with the dynamic deployment of ambulances. During this time, the program has experienced significant increases in call volume, as is found in your materials, over a ninety-four percent increase and corresponding cost increases to run the program. However, the EMS mileage rate has remained unchanged since its inception. As designed, EMS is generally funded through a combination of the EMS MSTU, as well as medical billing. Over the past nineteen years, the county has mitigated any EMS mileage rate increase and instead pursued funding strategies that have allowed the county to sustain EMS operations with minimal financial impacts to citizens. In doing so, the county has passed on about twenty million dollars in savings to Leon County taxpayers. Specifically, since 2015, the county has deliberately implemented several strategies to further delay... to further delay any increase in the MSTU, including drawing down available dedicated EMS fund balances, leveraging $1 million in Medicaid, using general revenue contributions, as well as maximizing federal cares dollars. At this point in time, to fully fund EMS with the dedicated recurring revenues and to provide adequate funding for future staffing and equipment issues, this item recommends increasing the EMS MSTU from .50 to .75 mils. Commissioners, the proposed rate of .75 remains below the mileage rate levied by other Florida counties that are utilizing similar systems to ours. These counties have mileage rates ranging from .9 to over 1 mil. For Leon County, the impact of this mileage rate increase for the average homeowner would be approximately $3 a month. Pursuant to Florida statutes, Commissioners, the city has to concur with our levying of the MSTU within city limits. The existing interlocal agreement, Commissioners, again, as we've pointed out, with the city, requires the city to allow the .25 mil increase upon 60 days' notice by the county. And to move forward with this, Commissioners, our item before you recommends options one and two. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Is there a motion for options one, two? Motion made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. I'm looking for comment?
Comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Media Pass?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, here again, Leon County, the little engine that could. I believe I can, I believe I can. We're taking on this burden for the whole community. I think there are two people missing. The hospitals who receive 100% benefit and profit from this service we provide for EMS. Number two, we just left an item where our expert told us, she's vacated, but she did tell us that there were call-specific measures with respect to fire services. Here we have a situation where, no doubt, we're not, there's nothing exacting about the call specific and whether or not the city is paying or underwriting the cost for city citizens that make calls on this system. I think that it's a parallel situation. She used the word methodology multiple times. And here we have a system that there is no methodology for distributing the burden on the basis of demand. If there was a cost to the city similar to the same, what we just finished with previous item, then we would have before us some kind of breakout of percentages that would show the city's use. And it ought to be a, if you're going on a three-year average, a five-year average, we got to find some average at which they should be writing a check for something vital like EMS services. What they do is vital in that previous measure, fire. But when you got a fire burning at your house, that's important, ain't it, Commissioner? And if you think you're having a heart attack at your house, in your body, in your house body, this house not made by earthly hand, that's vital too. And I think that if we're using one methodology for one system, it ought to be applicable and good for the gander. So I seconded the motion to support it. But I also say that the hospitals are missing. They're reaping huge profit. And the city is missing because they don't pay not one quarter for what we're doing in support of city residents. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, staff, want to provide some context here as people are listening in. We took over the EMS service in 2001. Is that correct? And we have not raised the funds used to provide that service since 2001. Is that correct, in terms of the mileage rate?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's 24 years?
Roundabout.
24, 23. In that time, if I'm reading this right, you said that 94% increase in the cost of the service, or in the volume of the service, from 26,000 service calls in 2001, I'm sorry, 2004 to 51,000 in 2022. And am I reading this correctly? We've added six ambulances in that time?
That's correct.
And what is the average cost of an ambulance and a staff? Do you know that off the top of your head?
It's about $700,000.
About $700,000 for six, or per ambulance, we've done that six times since we took on this responsibility. And I just want that to be understood. I mean, it's pretty remarkable that we have, again, been able to backfill the increasing costs of providing this service without raising the mileage rate and that even now, this mileage rate increase will account for approximately $3 per month that will show up on a property tax bill for the average assessed value of a home in Leon County, right?
That's correct.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Welch touched on a lot of what I was gonna bring up. I had one remaining question. Once these motions are adopted, if the motions are adopted, what will the new ratio of user fees to MSTU be? We talk a lot about the historical, 48 to 52, but what will be the new one, the new ratio?
We're getting back closer to 50/50.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Any other questions? Comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question, Mr. Administrator, now that we talked about it in our briefing. But just for the record, you know, we've looked at other options, right, before looking at increasing the mileage rate. You know, we've exhausted all our options. This is pretty much where we're at in regards to get the funding that we need.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good order. Could we know what's the cost of EMS ride across town from Holton Street to the hospital? How much does that cost?
Well, I think the charge is about $1,100.
And that's to the individual person getting that cab ride over to the hospital?
And their insurance company.
$1,100, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, options one and two are, the motion has been made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Is there any objection to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, show of passion, unanimously, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this budget discussion item proposes revisions to the county's streetlighting program. You'll recall, Commissioners, that the board requested back in January a new program to be responsive to residents' requests for lighting school bus stops. And that is what is before you today. Again, we've provided adequate funding in the budget and the county's existing streetlight program to support the new school bus lighting program. Commissioners, I could talk more about it, but I think I could just pause here and answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Caban, is there a motion? Options one and two has been moved by Commissioner Caban, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any comment? Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Caban.
Vince, I know you've asked probably within your own mind that I not ask from within my own mind. When is y'all gonna get the Crawfords Road from Wilson Green down to Capital Circle? Can anything like a light bulb shine? Does the county have any intention? And here we got the school bus, a whole new category that can get a light. And I'm not against the school bus. Not against the city bus getting some lights that they stop. But for ye ears, I can't get a light bulb on Crawfords Road. Vince, is there any sense of a clue, or if it's just gonna be on the 37th of March of next year, I mean, any, anything? Just tell me something, I can leave this hearing as we go for a new lighting program that we shall overcome someday on Crawfords Road.
The funds, Mr. Chairman, Commission, are fully funded by the state and they're coordinating installation with the city for that section of road you're talking about. It's a state project, the state's fully funded it, they're coordinating with the state to do the installations.
What Crawfords Road?
That section you spoke about, from Wilson Green to Capital Circle.
Wave your hand if who said that. All right, guys, y'all know I've been looking like a boo-boo head for a long time. County Commissioner Bill Proctor can't get a light bulb. I mean, come on, man, y'all. Why do you vote for somebody who can't get a light bulb on a pole where electricity is closed? I'm looking bad. And I need some help to stop looking bad that I can't get a light bulb put up. I thank y'all.
Mr. Media Pass, I think I only asked for these lights at these bus stops at Fort Brayden one time. And staff made it work, so I don't know.
And don't do me like that.
All right. Commissioner Caban, make her the motion, I'm going Commissioner Welch, is that okay, Commissioner Welch?
Ray Show come pull his knife out.
Yeah, that's fine, we're gonna probably say the same thing.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, Commissioner Proctor, what it's worth, I don't think he's got that much swag, man. I think, you know, they hooking you up.
I had to get Ray Show come pull that knife out my back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank staff. And I think Commissioner Caban and I sort of simultaneously had this item, you know, as a concern for us. And I want to thank you guys for being creative with coming up with a solution. This is a great example of how Leon County's administration and leadership and staff figure out a solution to problems that may not have crystal-clear solutions, creative solutions. And as the item mentions, you know, Highway 20 and Fairbanks Ferry Road in my district, you know, these are perfect examples of areas of our county where we might have some kids standing in the darkness, especially early in the morning, waiting on the child's high school school bus at, you know, 6 o'clock, 6:30. I mean, it's dark out there, guys, and we want to make sure that these kids are safe. And if we can facilitate a creative and cost-effective solution at the county, I think that is a win for the community. And that really, truly, in this item, is a great microcosm of how good our county leadership and staff facilitate solutions. So thank you.
Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Meyer and the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I'd just like to say that, I think we should make this a little bit of a big deal for staff. From staff, I mean, we talked about in our briefing, we're probably the only local government that has taken the lead in the state of Florida for this, is that correct?
We couldn't identify another county that was doing a similar program.
No, but, no, really, this is awesome. I know this is something that I know is important to our, my neighbors out in Fort Brayden, and especially in Woodville. And Commissioner Proctor, we talked about, you know, equity, and I think it really does start with our youth. And so I'm really happy to see this on today's agenda, and I want to thank my colleagues and thank staff for bringing it to us.
County Attorney was Commissioner Caban out of order for using the word equity.
All right, Commissioner Meyer and Vice Chair, we go to a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think it was about a year ago when Jody, my chief of staff, and I met with some neighbors way, way up near the Georgia line, Fairbanks Ferry. It's a very small neighborhood of folks that are way up there next to the Georgia line. And they asked for us for some help in getting some streetlights at their school bus locations because, you know, early in the morning, it's pitch dark. And when you're living in a rural part of our county, there aren't any other lights around. And so I wanted to thank the county staff, the county administrator, for working to make this happen. And like Commissioner Maddox, I just had to ask for it one time and it happened, so. But I really, it means a lot, it means a lot. It means a lot to the folks that are up at Fairbanks Ferry, who often feel like sometimes they're left out and forgotten, and they have not been forgotten here. So I wanted to thank all of you for your work on this. And thank the commission for working on something that's gonna help our kids when they're waiting for the school bus in the morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to make comment real quick just to say how, I'm gonna come back to you, just to say how good it is to see governments working together. I mean, this is a benefit that those children that ride those school buses every day will get. And I'm sure we had to work with the school system to make that happen. We oftentimes talk about the work that we do with the City of Tallahassee, how much we partner with each other. But I think this highlights the partnership that we have with Leon County Schools and I look forward to us continuing to expand upon that. One thing, I was looking at their board workshop yesterday, they talked a little bit about sports tourism in their fields and how we might be able to better partner with them in the sports tourism side of things on using school board amenities for those tourism things that we may want to do in the future. So I'm just excited about the partnership and the way we're starting to talk more about partnership between Leon County and Leon County Schools and School Board. Mattel Vice Chair, you'll close us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited about this particular item, number four, or Mr. Chair. And of course, being the commission's representative on the Children's Services Council, I've got special concerns for our childrens. This is clearly a benefit to our children. Also, I'm excited about amending the land, amending the land development code aspect of it as well, so that when we have new developments, the developer, as part of their initial plan, will agree to fund, you know, the lighting and installation and what have you for bus stops. So I think that will clearly benefit our children now and in the future as well. Like I say, staff never ceases to amaze me with their good work and the foresight as well, because we are talking about protecting our children now, but we're clearly looking at the future as well. And hopefully, eventually, Commissioner Proctor, we will have the protection for our children and all segments of our county. I know your concern, Woodville Highway and what have you. And I think working together, as Chairperson has mentioned, working together with other governmental entities with our city, I think we will eventually satisfy your concerns in that area. We just have to keep working at it, keep being cooperative, working together, and having perhaps maybe some workshops with the city to specifically address what we feel are deficiencies on the South Side. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman asks once and he gets it. God, Chairman asks once.
I was just wanting to have been moved by Commissioner Caban, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Seeing none, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the final item that we have for your consideration today, Commissioners, is the, in our continuous effort to, again, identify opportunities, big and small, this budget discussion item seeks the board's direction, whether to stop publishing certain legal notices in the local newspaper and instead to post these notices in a publicly-accessible website. Commissioners, during last year's legislative session, Florida laws were amended regarding the publication requirements for legal notices. These changes now allow certain legal ads to be posted online on a county-host website rather than in the newspaper if the cost to post it on the publicly-accessible website is less than the publishing in a newspaper. Several counties have already implemented this change and they've shared various approaches that they've used to implement these changes. For Leon County, using a vendor to host a publicly-accessible website would be the most cost-effective way to do this, again, should the board decide to do this. Leon County annually spends about $40,000 on legal notices in the newspaper. Per the new law, the county, if the county establishes a website to publish the notices, any other local government can also utilize this website. The City of Tallahassee, for example, has indicated that they would wish to use such a website would pay half the cost of implementation and maintenance. If used by other government agencies, the cost, of course, would be further offset. If a publicly-accessible website is established to post certain legal notices, the cost savings by not publishing in the newspaper are estimated to be about $27,500 a year. Finally, Commissioners, there are numerous other publications, recruitments, advertisements, et cetera, that would still be published in the newspaper at a cost of about $66,000 a year. Again, regardless of your action today, that would continue. Again, we're just seeking your direction on this and, again, just identifying it as an opportunity- an opportunity due to the new legislative changes. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Mr. Media Pass, you got a motion for me?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we maintain the status quo and not touch these items seek to save by cutting out our, our, so Vince, I like to see us maintain status quo. The staff is asking for board direction. Let me make that as a motion beaming, but I know that most of District One is not going to follow the county on some site that you're talking about. I'm not going to follow. Secondly, I know that the Capital Outlook newspaper is one of the sources which we we do support and for my district. In fact, by the way, I thought they had a very good cover story this week, Capital Outlook newspaper. And we should just make sure that the E-word, Commissioner Command, equity, did I say that too loud? That there is equity in terms of access of what traditionally many people in our community favor. I believe that the newspaper, now what I had a concern with.
Commissioner Proctor, give me a second. Option, option number two.
I mean, not one, but board direction was that we maintain status quo.
Yeah, option number two is to accept the report, take no further action. It's been made by Commissioner Proctor, is our second to that motion? Motion dies for lack of justification. Mr. Proctor?
Question. When the county, when we buy the Sunday thingy, when we put the ad out, county's activities, does that count as a legal notice? And when we announce that we're going to have our meetings, we put a schedule of public hearings, must we go through the want ads section? How specific is a legal notice? Because we do a good job of putting that in Sunday's paper, at least, for our activities.
I could, I could take that if you like. Yes, that would not count. We would still do that. This would just, this would just, and we've got, again, about 66,000 a year of ads like those, including job ads as well as other notices. There are other notices, I should point out, that are still required to be in the newspaper that are not exempted. So there's a whole list of other legal notices that were required to continue to run in the newspaper. This would just be for those that, those ads that are now exempted under these new legislative changes for us to be able to exercise this option. But there would still be a two-parter, legal notices that remain required for us to run in the newspaper and those which, those those advertisements that we would opt to continue that we pointed out in the agenda items. So the link would continue in the newspaper. The, all of our job postings would continue to be in the newspaper and that sort of thing. This just exempts certain legal notices that are now, again, no longer required to be placed in the newspaper of general circulation.
I saw yesterday, somebody was notified by the Department of Children's Services that they no longer have parental rights and stuff. If we put something like that in our, in our thingy, our advertisement as well, looks good, whets appetite, invites, it's attractive, that's not legal for purposes of 125. That's what you're telling me?
That's correct.
All right. Well, I like to see the Capital Outlook newspaper, which is a major access point for urban core communities remain. And I'm not sure how the motion going to be, but I think that, I realize we're in the 21st century, but many people cannot pay the roughly $65, $70 to get the Wi-Fi that comes on the cable bill. That thing is like $70, $60, $70 extra. And so at best, 50 cent newspaper still beats a $70 bill to cable company. So whoever makes this motion, I've tried. I think that the urban core, use word culture, you want to use word affordability, got 32304 over there. We can't leave people behind by putting all public notices on a computer, assuming that everybody in 32304 can't afford the cost for Wi-Fi and having access. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion, Commissioner Command?
I would like to make a motion for staff option one and two. And then can we make an amendment to include Capital Outlook as an addition, as an amendment to that?
We already do it.
Okay, perfect.
So I believe motion will be with staff option number one.
Staff, staff option one and two.
I believe it was.
Just one.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay, my apologies, staff option one.
So that takes care of what I was saying?
Well, one with the addition.
He said they already, they already did it, right?
They've already done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the question is, do we already advertise in the Capital Outlook? Yes, extensively.
Cool. Yeah, I know, but we're not wanting to cut the throat of that advertising, is what I'm saying.
No.
Will, will, will Capital Outlook advertising be be affected by us going to option number one?
No, it will not.
Okay.
It will not.
Option number one has been moved by Commissioner Command or seconded? Seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any other comment? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor is right about we can't leave people behind and not everybody has internet also or access to a computer or, you know, not everyone is able or you don't understand the computer. But also, a lot of people don't get the newspaper. You just have to refer to the nice letter Gannett CEO sent us to say, please keep advertising earlier in the year. And so because of that, I think there's a change here that actually might be make things more accessible. And so I would like to make a substitute motion or offer to add to the current motion that we make accessible a paper copy of all notices at each library and at the county courthouse for anybody who wants to show up at the library or the county courthouse to look through our paper binder of current public notices.
I think that's a fair point. Are you willing to amend the motion?
Most have been amended. Any other comment?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer, you got a comment? Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask the county administrator, I don't have any major objection as far as the paper copy, but I'd just like to hear from the county administrator about the, would there be any adverse effects? Would there be any issues as far as disseminating those those copies? And also, number two, with option one on the table was the addition of, I think Commissioner Proctor mentioned the Capital Outlook, and I think your response was that you are, we are already advertising in the Capital Outlook. So with option one, this gives us the option then of having accessible to website advertising as well as maintaining what we already have, am I correct?
Correct. The answer to your first question, no problem. That very easily for us to accomplish in terms of the providing those copies at those public locations. And number two, again, this just exempts us from certain legal notices that are posted, that are required to be posted currently in the Tallahassee Democrat. And again, so it would not affect the our Capital Outlook advertising in any way.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Administrator, is there anything that that says we have to make this decision
No.
All right, if we're all comfortable, motion employers, option number one amended by Commissioner O'Keefe. You thinking? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I know we're just about to go into a vote on this. I have no objection to the the amendment, but when this comes back to us, would it make sense for us to to look at the other option of, rather than printing something out at every library and displaying it, how about one option, one alternative would be to have library staff, you know, help someone, assist someone that needs to see, that wants to see legal notices, get it onto the website on a library computer? Even though I I know there are a lot of people, my my mother-in-law, for one, who actually has zero skills in in using anything with a computer. But I I think it might make, it might be more cost effective and it actually might be an entree for some people to actually start using a computer more more efficiently if they can easily reach out to library staff, who I know will gladly be able to help them get to the Leon County website with the legal notices. I think that might be a little bit more efficient for us. And I'm not saying we need to vote on that versus the paper copy today, but maybe when this comes back to us, it might be helpful to have that type of option presented to us as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I I don't want to change the motion on hand at all, but I do think it might make more sense just to have that other option available because we are in the 21st century. And yes, accessibility is an issue. If someone goes to the library to look for legal notices, I know our library staff can help them find it on the website. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Any other comments? All right, options number one, as amended by Commissioner O'Keefe is on the floor. Motion made by Commissioner Command, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Yeah, you seconded. Any objections to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, sure, it is passed unanimously. Mr. Administrator, do you have any other, any other business?
Mr. Chairman, just a big thanks again to all county staff, especially this time of year, O and B, to the board again for your good guidance today. We'll see you in June.
Yes, sir.
It occurred to me earlier that we commended the county administrator for being a unique problem solver and that no other counties in the state had created such a problem. I think that's a commendation to us as a board. We create unique problems for our county administrator. You're welcome.
Actually, I actually, I don't think we can, we create half as many problems as our our state government has created for him, so I won't take any of that credit. I'll pass that right along. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Real quick, I don't want to let this official meeting go by without recognizing Assistant County Administrator Wanda Hunter and for being honored, well deservedly, for being one of the top 25 women to know.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we adjourn.